This conference will now be recorded.
We're going to call the first parks meeting of 2024 to order. It is six o'clock on January the 4th. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. I'm filling in for Chair Thompson this evening. He had a family issue come up tonight and can't attend, so please bear with me. We will do the roll call really quickly. Commissioner Izumita.
President.
President, okay. Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Tidy.
Present.
Commissioner Samsal.
Present.
Commissioner Kusurik is here. Commissioner Thompson is excused, and I think that is all of our commission. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I have four items to add to the agenda, and then I will ask the other commissioners if they have additional things. Under Old Business, I'd like to add the citrus fundraiser, which is coming to a head this evening. The grant opportunities that we discussed the last meeting. And then under Citizens Concerns, I know we have Main Street here this evening. Nice to see you. And Michelle Leonard had written into Brian about slippage on the bridge to Battle Rock Beach. So we're going to move you up the agenda a little bit in the interest of time, in case you'd like to get out of here afterwards. All right. Other additions to the agenda?
I would like to add to Old Business, the community bulletin boards that are just laying in wait.
Nice.
Um, I have something to talk about as far as, um, like grant ideas, but I think we can just throw that in with.
Great. We'll just call 8C Grants broadly.
Okay, that works.
We'll address it then.
Yeah.
Any other additions to the agenda? Going once, going twice, sold. All right, we have minutes to review. Thank you very much, Joseph. We have our November 3rd minutes, it looks like, and our December minutes. So if the public will please bear with us for a moment, we'll just take a quick review of these. I'm happy to accept the motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from November 2nd and December 7th, 2023.
I second.
Very good. Let's take a vote. Commissioner Frazier. Yes. Commissioner Tidy.
Yes.
Commissioner Samsal.
Yes.
Commissioner Izumita.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kusurik is a yes. Thank you, Joseph, for your hard work on the minutes. We also have a financial report. And I think the overview is probably, yeah, here we go. Second section is our financial. I think we can do consent acceptance.
Yep.
Of the financial report?
Yeah.
It's nice to see what we have because they're going to ask questions.
By consensus, do we want to accept the financial report? Yes, from Tidy.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I have a question. Is the 120 in rent for A-frame supposed to be the total?
So far this year.
Oh, for.
Projected and what you've paid so far this fiscal year. Here at $120, let me take in.
For February or for January?
Up until from last year.
From April?
Well, this is.
July of last year. Fiscal year is June, July to June each year.
That would be five months, though.
How much?
120 a month.
What?
I pay 120 a month for that space, so that figure would be incorrect. That's just what stands out to me because I know.
Okay. Then we do not have a consensus to accept the financials, and we will.
We paid 840.
Does it say the total lower down?
Activity is 840, period activity is 120 is what it is. 840 is fiscal activity. Yeah, good.
Okay. I don't see where that's at, but.
Activity, that's just per month.
Okay.
For the month of November.
Got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you good with this?
Yep.
Okay, great. By consensus, the financial report is approved. Thank you, Joseph, and we have a vote to approve both meeting minutes. We will now move to Citizens Concerns, and this is where I'll invite Main Street to join us as item 3A.
I feel very small. Anyhow, we're just here to report on how it's going and then to clarify how we get reimbursed for a lot of the things that we've purchased. And don't panic, the total is $204. So.
Big money.
Yeah, big money we've spent. Hundreds of hours, but not much money because we work for free. So I'm going to have Kitty talk about the volunteer situation, and then I'll be back with you.
All right.
We started out with 25. We're down to 13 volunteers.
Could you start over into the mic, please, for the people online?
Okay, we started out with 25 volunteers. We're down to 13. Some of them have left because of medical conditions. Family medical conditions. Some of them just have quit. Some of them are gone for a while. I'll know a little bit better. People are starting to come back. But 13 isn't enough to keep it running, you know, two shifts a day, so we've cut it down to. When I only have one person for a day, I cut it to three hours from 11 to 2. And most people don't want to do four hours, so we did that. I still have some people working. I still have some two-day shifts or two-shift days, which is good. I don't want to discourage anybody, so I leave them that way instead of trying to say you can have this time off. It's just too confusing. Anyway, so we're, you know, we're kind of plodding along until I see what we have scheduled up until the first part of February, and then we'll just redo the schedule. We have a great crew. I'm really very happy with everybody we have. It's been fun. It, you know, keeps me busy. But we do have a good crew, and they're all pitching in there and doing their best to help us out, so appreciate that.
Wonderful. We're grateful for all of the volunteers and for Main Street helping us in partnership run that, run that building. Yeah.
Kitty went up to Coos Bay and spent hours with the visitor's center director up there and really got a lot out of it, I believe, and has done just a fantastic job for us. Very proud of her.
Been in twice since the renovation. It looks wonderful. Yeah.
So we continue to work toward the displays. We now have the big posters thanks to Kim Foster. She's gotten us the big posters on each of the big displays, so it kind of sifted up a bit. And I just got a note from Elaine Roman yesterday that the very faded Native American print. She contacted the artist, and actually, the artist donated a replacement. And so we'll be taking the old one and the replacement to Carol Malley and having that redone, so it will be much brighter. And she also got a narrative from, I can't remember the woman's name. You probably know I can't, the artist, and some narrative about the. Because it actually was a coastal trail of tears that's being depicted there. Redfish Rocks thing is working pretty well. It seems like about once or twice a week, it decides just to be a computer and do whatever it wants to. AI attack, but we call Carolyn Rice of the Redfish Rocks, and she comes down and works her magic, and it gets going again. The August 26th event was great. The QR codes and the Google Maps that they had set up was wonderful, and I was hoping that maybe we could work out some way that that could be there most of the time. It was just little stands along with a QR code that you, then it took you to a narrative about what you were seeing. That's really not our job, but I think it'd be a really cool thing if Parks worked with Redfish Rocks to maybe make that happen because it seemed to be a very popular thing. Redfish Rocks was also going to seek grants to help fund the remodeling, and we've not had any report on that so far. And all the things that you were supposed to do, I assume most of you have read this. The big thing that would be an expense for the city or for the parks, depending on how that works, is we were going to replace that horrible, old, smelly, infested carpet by either tearing it up and scraping it and then staining the concrete or something different than the very awful. It maintains a really wonderful odor. And at the time that John was here, John Huddle, he said that we'd probably do it in January or February, but we're kind of running without that promise anymore. So I don't know who to talk to at the city right now about that or whether it's you, but that's still a desirable plan, just because when you walk in there, it still stinks. Yeah, sometime between now and maybe April would be lovely.
We are a city administrator short as of right now, I believe, and as soon as we get a new city administrator in, we can.
Okay, okay.
Reopen that line of work.
All right. I just wanted to have it out there so that you were aware. And so the main thing was that we've put in the man-hours, but we don't feel that this was really Main Street's baby. We were trying to help the parks and the tourism here. And rather than spend our funds for which we were promised grants from another of the three involved and didn't get anything. And we'd just like some way of financing our expenditures. We're giving you the man-hours and the visitor's center open. Kitty said they'd had over 300 people in even since in November and December, so that's not too bad. And it'd be nice if we could recoup our $204.82.
I think you would have, as the Parks Commission would have to take it to City Council and have them approve it, but I'm not sure because it's, you know, a limited amount.
I'll talk to Dina and see what's happening.
Well, according to TLT things, all TLT monies are supposed to go toward tourism. One seventh goes toward the advertising that we do for the city, getting the ads in the various tourist magazines and maintaining the Discover Port Orford website and the Discover Port Orford Facebook pages. But there's another six sevenths of that that are supposed to go for parks and recreation and anything that a tourist would also enjoy. So anyhow, not coming with my hand out. We can afford the 204 bucks, but it seems like.
I think we certainly support reimbursing your needful expenses. We have run into a timing situation, I think, with city resources and recently trying to get funds approved through City Council. So Tidy is going to champion the reimbursement and see what we can do.
Now, do you need receipts or how did that work?
That probably will be us the best.
Okay.
I'll talk to you.
Did you still have your. Yeah, and I did too, so he should.
That should work.
Yeah.
We've, Kitty and I did the purchasing, and we've been reimbursed from Terry, our treasurer, but we had to give him the receipts, but I'm sure he kept them. He's very meticulous.
Yeah, we're good. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Main Street. And item 3B will be Michelle helping us learn more about this slip on the bridge to Battle Rock Beach.
Good evening. So it happened that I was volunteering at the visitor's center on Wednesday, and this nice lady came in. She didn't seem aggressive or anything, but she wanted to share with me that she had slipped and come down pretty hard on both her knees, and she showed me pictures of them. And both of them were scabbed over. And her suggestion was that you put, that the city put some kind of strips maybe on that wooden bridge so that when they're, like that asphalt stripping. I don't think that would be terribly expensive or even a sign that says slippery when wet, just something to warn people.
Okay.
And so she said she had called the city right away and that whoever she spoke to said that it wasn't the city's responsibility. It was the state. So I just want to let you know that somebody's giving information that's incorrect. So anyway, I followed up on it and spoke to Brian and.
Thank you. I do.
And also Susan.
Yeah, I do believe that is the city's responsibility down to the beachfront.
Yeah.
Grip tape is a great idea. I think that's a very cost-effective solution.
Tried.
So, thank you.
Welcome.
I think we needed to order some grip tape anyway for the A-frame ramp.
There's grip tape that you can get for like skateboard ducks.
That's exactly.
Yeah, you can buy them in like rolls too and.
Great.
Cut them. Yeah, that's true.
Okay. All right, thank you. That concludes Section 3. Any other citizens' concerns? All right. Item 4, the Buffington Park Host Report. I don't see him in attendance. Any word from him, Joseph, to pass along? No.
We need to address this.
Yes, we do.
We really, really need to.
Yeah. I should add that to Old Business potentially.
Take action on our park host.
Yes.
Consent calendar. I don't think we have any items on the consent calendar, so we will move to Commissioner Reports. I will start with Commissioner Izumita.
Yeah, so Battle Rock is an ongoing issue, not just with the bridge. We had another citizen come with concerns for the lower stairs and the state of the access down below. I put word out on our Facebook page. I don't know if any of you have like read the feedback from the community. It seemed like the consensus for the community was to remove the stairs and to get one even grade going down. I would suggest not taking the stairs completely out because if you get farther down, there's more cement stairs that are farther down, that are strangely spaced apart, that you could potentially repurpose the upper stairs to improve what's going on just below it. So more discussion is needed there. We would definitely need something to stabilize the path. That was a concern for people is if you take the stairs out, there's just going to be continued erosion. There is like ground cover that you can get to go underneath gravel. That's like a net, basically, that kind of catches the gravel and keeps it, holds it on the ground. So that was kind of the community feedback we got for addressing that. There would need to be digging to put any kind of stabilization in there, so we'd have to contact tribes in order to move forward with that. Again, we'd have to come up with a budget and all of that, so we can discuss that. That would be more of a line item to continue discussion with that. I just want to let you know that that's what the community had feedback with.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I did get contacted with a contractor to come and look at the A-frame building's deck. And he and I will be meeting Monday or Tuesday of this next week to look at it. So if anyone else is interested in coming out and meeting and just kind of seeing what his conclusion is with the deck, I can pass on the word of when we will be meeting. And that's it.
Thank you. Before we move away from the Battle Rock access trail stairs, because that is city property, is that a volunteer-type effort that we can go take care of? Or do we need to look at finding a bid and a contractor to handle that as well? Don't know. Okay. All right.
Oh, it is.
I know. That's why I'm asking.
My assumption, which, key word there is assumption, would be since it's city property, you would need someone licensed and bonded.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, I talked to, we were talking about one of those neighbors' chairs, and I talked to. Joe, Joe, I talked to Joe Kenny one day about it, and he said that it's city responsibility to have access because it's state mandated that there is good access to the beach for every community, you know? And so I think that is probably a city problem that probably you need to have some professional in there. But he did say that we were supposed to have easy access to the beach somewhere in town for, and that it is state.
That would be interesting to see how to do that, considering the facts of topography, but thank you for the information.
We also talked with a young man from Trail Keepers. It's a nonprofit that is going to be finishing up the four-point trail pathway. Steve Lawton just met with him yesterday, I think, or the other morning, Trevor Ratchus. And he's going to be doing that, but I also talked to him about that very same issue right there. So maybe he's here doing that work, go sit and grab him and take him down and say, what could we do? That's their job is professional trail management, so he might be able to.
If he is, if he is a bonded and insured trail builder, that would be a good.
That was out of state, it seems like it was state needed, you know, with the park going beyond, pretty much the center of.
Without a city administrator, I'm not a lawyer. I can't tell you what the requirements are, and I don't even play one on TV. So all I can say is, you know, TKO is a great organization. If they want to help, I'm sure we'd be happy to have it, but we need it to be cleared through city administration, whatever happens.
And maybe Eddie Kessler too. I know, I just thought just.
Right.
You know, he's.
Very local.
Yeah, so, an idea.
Okay. So the Battle Rock trail remains an issue. I think at the very least, we can get the grip tape down in short order. That's the sort of thing that I don't think we need tribal permission or contractors or anything to just put down some grip tape and improve the safety there. So, thank you. How about Commissioner Samsal?
Nothing new at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Tidy.
We had the Christmas wrap-up tournament on the 16th of December. We had 65 people show up. Would have been a little bit more, but crab opener was that day, so I had a lot of people write me that week and say they couldn't do it. So we have 30 more discs left with towels for $20, and that'd be an extra $600 in raising fees. And I have $1,625 to deposit from the tournament.
Can you repeat that, please?
$1,625.
Hi, goodness. Nice.
So, yeah. So that was it. It looks like next year, we're going to do four tournaments in Easter.
Would you like to give that $1,625 to Joseph on the record?
Yeah, Joseph.
I know he likes it official.
Yeah, I know. So I brought it in. And then next year, we looked, I had talked to Dina. Next year, the city is not going to pay for all the discs. I'm going to personally go ahead and pay for all the discs. Then I'm just going to give the city fundraiser money.
Wow.
It's been sort of, sort of hard with them, the city, purchasing the discs back and forth and everything else. So we're just going to take that out, and we're just going to be bigger prizes next year and everything else too. Also, the coolest part was we had a toy fundraiser. I had 127 toys donated, and I gave out 29 children toys and some discs and everything else too, so that was pretty.
Wonderful.
It was pretty cool to do.
Good job.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep, that was it for next year. So we're going to do four next year. Easter Saturday.
Okay.
Fourth of July, on Fourth of July.
Nice.
Halloween, Saturday of Halloween, and then two Saturdays before Christmas, is like we did this year.
Fantastic.
Sweet. So, yeah, we look forward. Next year will be really good. We've got a lot of people from the north, Coos Bay and everything else. This year, for Christmas, the farthest one was Klamath, I'll say Klamath Falls. They came all the way from Klamath Falls to come play disc golf, so it's pretty cool.
I would just like to say that I was always interested in the disc golf thing, but you've really turned it into a wonderful asset for the park, so good job, Rick.
It's been cool to see people that would never come to Port Orford stop and played disc golf.
Super cool.
Yeah.
Commissioner Frazier.
Citrus fundraiser. We are almost to go with that. We're looking at, in about an hour, the truck should be here with 250 boxes of citrus. So it's time to start pushing and moving that. Things kind of got a little sidetracked, off track. There was potential of canceling the order, and then the gentleman said absolutely not, and then called the other day saying he had to cancel it because of truck issues. And then he's ending up paying 900 out of his pocket to get it here. So that's kind of been a whole thing. So I did just start advertising it on Facebook a couple days ago, which was a little behind, but we do have a ton of orders and also people in the community. I believe in Langlois, somebody is going to take about 50 boxes to push and give back. Any ideas to, I guess, advertise and push sales for those are welcome. They will be stored and distributed out of the cafe, so if that's something that you guys want to just kind of share, I'll have a bunch kind of on display as you first walk in, so hopefully that's kind of a way.
Will there, will there be boxes that have not been pre-ordered that are available for people to walk up and buy?
Yes, plenty. We'll get all that sorted out. We should have a good enough crew now to unload the truck here in the next hour or two kind of thing. That's pretty much it as far as Citrus fundraiser goes.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have anything particularly exciting to report this month, so we will move on to our old business. Item 7A is the playground update. Joseph, I'm guessing that.
There is no update.
There is no update.
There's no update just because of. I know that we had talked about the grants and everything else too. And I think that would be a, a better process going forward is trying to get us a better park, a better, a better playground. Especially with this grant, there's the grant from the Oregon State Lottery. It's half a million bucks, man. And there's no match. It's, you know, like, we can do a lot of stuff in our park with that grant. So that's what I'm pushing for with, um, uh, what is the, what's the grant people out of Roseberry that we use? Kuz Curry Douglas CCD. So that's who we've been using for other grants. We just got approved for the community building. We just got a one point five million dollar grant for a community building. So that's. Hey, yeah, that's good. So we got that approved. It's, it's going to be a long drawn out thing, but still. Think that we need to raise about another two hundred thousand dollars for the total, I think it was one point nine million for everything. I think we have two fifty already there. So we're, we're ripe for it and CCD wants to help us out with a couple of these things. And I think we should, we can easily get these done. So.
So would there, would there be any work on our end that they would need help in getting the ball rolling on that or they would?
We just need to go apply for it. It's, it opens up this month up until March. So we have a three, two and a half month window to get this accomplished. And I think we can easily do that with CCD. They have all the information.
The writing of the grant and everything.
Yeah, they have all, they have everything.
Okay.
Lovely.
So that's, that's what I'm going to be focusing on for like the next month is trying to get that finished off so that we get in this cycle. And awards, I think in May or June.
So, uh, just to make sure you're going to take point on pursuing grant funding through CCD. Uh, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Uh, so let's move to item seven B, the citrus fundraiser. I feel like we just covered that with commissioner reports. Uh, if you'd like a wonderful half bushel of oranges or grapefruits, please visit Cafe two point O and bring cash or a local check. Thank you. Uh, item seven C, uh, grants. I feel like we've just covered that as well. So.
Well, Siaran, did you have something?
So yeah, there's, um, I just, I, I wanted to go over, Joseph, um, kind of what we're looking at as far as like what we have for the playground fundraiser. You know, how much we need. Um, so Joseph Bain out of Banden has reached out to me. He works with granters. He's on the South Coast Advisory Council for OCF. Um, he is willing to help put together, pretty much, um, get grants going. He's looking at, wants to look at different foundations for us, um, even going through Banden Dunes, um, talking with them. They have a charitable foundation that they donate to, something he's interested in fully helping. He just kind of needs to know like how much we have raised, how much we need to raise, what we're looking at as far as kind of a timeline that kind of comes down to what grants we're looking at as well. I would like to explore his help. He's a pretty wonderful local from Banden to here. He supports Port Alfred in a lot of many businesses. Um, he's willing to, you know, put in the effort to help us and get this going. So whether like whatever grant we're looking at as far as I know, whatever with what we talked with Pat about.
Right.
That being an option or this being an option. I guess a question is, am I, am I able to share this information of what our budget looks like with him and, um, that kind of stuff? And then is.
Budget doesn't matter, public record. So you are good to share.
Yeah, okay, cool. So what I'm looking at here for the parks fun. So this was ending. Okay. Forgive me for trying to understand some of this. Um, so. Can you help me understand this? What we have right now? What have we raised here?
But that one's, that's pretty much me. He consolidated the entire playground one into this playground upgrade one here.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? Hundred and sixty three. So that one, when he did ninety five thousand transfer general fund, that went to this. He wanted to make that number bigger with contingency funds.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is we have a hundred and sixty three thousand available. To use for. Okay, so that, is that, is that our goal or is that what we have?
That's what we have. We love to have. What was the playground we looked at? It was like three hundred and ninety thousand. And that was with all the nice stuff with the, the better flooring that we.
I don't remember the specific numbers, but it was considerably more expensive. Yeah.
I think we decided against the flooring because of.
I think it was expense, wasn't it?
Mostly in time and.
We can ask for it in a grant application. It might make sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'm looking at then is that one sixty three thousand. That's what we have right now. Okay, good. That's awesome, you guys. That's great. Okay, cool. I'm gonna, um, pass that on with him then and kind of get an idea of what he has to say as far as grants and.
You are going to pursue grant opportunity through, uh, parallel to Greg's efforts, uh, through Banden.
Just to see if there's, you know, what options we have available. I mean, can we do more than one, you know?
There's plenty of.
What our timeframe looks like. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Siaran?
Yes.
Today in the mail, a female I got from T-Mobile Grant. It's for rural development. It's up to fifty thousand dollars. It can be elected officials, which Greg would be, or it could be through us, James Street. But it's exactly what you guys are wanting to do, uh, help build stronger, more prosperous small towns. They want to, um, punch for projects to build, rebuild or refresh community spaces that help foster local connections in your community. It sounds like it's.
A perfect fit. Yeah. Either for the playground or the community center.
Yeah.
Thanks, Susan.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a T-Mobile hometown, um, hometown brand, T-Mobile hometown brand. If you need a student, you can apply on your behalf, but I think since you're elected. If it's great news, it's a chance for somebody to do that.
Good idea.
Thank you.
And we get those all the time that are so into rural development. If you'd like me to push ones, what you think that you might be able to apply for, we'd be glad to send. Because we get hundreds of grant opportunities.
Siaran, are you done? I didn't mean to catch you off earlier.
No, no, you didn't. I was just, I just wanted to touch in with you guys before I went ahead and spoke with him and.
Sure.
Found opportunities elsewhere.
Great.
Cool. Thank you.
So, uh, it sounds like we have some good multi-pronged efforts on grants. That's wonderful. I didn't have any items added for new business, but does anybody have new business?
Um, I had added one for old business, bulletin boards.
Let's do that one.
So in storage, Tidy and I went over and checked them out. Uh, we have community bulletin boards that are just ready to go. Uh, the one concern is we didn't see the plexiglass.
There's no plexiglass. They didn't order the right ones. They ordered non-inclined. Saying what was ordered.
Okay.
Okay.
A year ago, and that's what we have. There's non-inclined or bulletin board. She just put stuff.
Could be adapted to be enclosed.
Yeah, sure we could.
Did they have the framing though?
Yes, the framing and everything. No.
Okay.
Well, I'm, no, not.
Um, so I, I'm happy to kind of take lead on that and go check in with Public Works guys and see if we can get some hardware. And get some plexiglass. Would we have to create, yeah, for the budgeting of plexiglass is kind of expensive. But, um, yeah, maybe we'll check in about that. Uh, next time I didn't know that if, didn't, that plexiglass hadn't been found. So we have community bulletin boards that we were talking about putting up when it raised, one at the A frame building. Is that what you were thinking? So I can check in with those guys and we can at least get the frames hung. And then once they're hung, we can figure out how to go to them enclosed. So, um, I just wanted to double check that those were the locations that we were.
What are the sizes? I'm just curious.
Thirty six by like thirty six. They're pretty, you know, I mean like three feet by three feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not huge.
That would be, I don't know. I just recently went up to the Banden Glass and it was something similar size and it was around a hundred and twenty ish dollars.
Yeah, plexiglass is not cheap.
But that'd be easy to raise.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, I'm happy to take point on at least getting the frames hung.
Great. So the locations, please remind me.
On the A frame building, I believe facing Jack, is that Jackson?
I'm bad at streets. I'm a landmark navigator.
It was fourteenth and I don't know what that cross street is.
Okay.
I think, believe facing.
So you think facing out towards the street?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's.
Kind of the only spot for it. And then I'm not sure if, do we need to talk to management at Ray's?
They've already accepted it. They're waiting on us.
Okay.
Gary Burns has already talked to Terry and got that already okay.
Okay, so it's just putting a fire under, under.
Pretty much just because of not having a plexiglass, the reason why it's not installed.
Okay. Yeah. That can happen later. So, awesome.
Very good. All right. Uh, I will ask again, any new business that I missed during the additions to the agenda? All right. Uh, we will now move to considerations, citizens' considerations. Commissioners, you can speak as citizens. Citizens, you can speak as citizens. Any additional considerations for us? All right. Commissioners' considerations.
Yep, yep.
Yes, Commissioner Tidy.
If we look at our financials real quick, if you look down at repair and maintenance, R and M, community building. It has a forty six thousand dollars in that one line item.
Yes, sir.
We had put forty four thousand dollars into that this year to replace the roof. Um, we just got the one point five million dollars to replace the entire building. I would like to reallocate that forty four thousand dollars and put it into, uh, Buffington Park or A frame. And utilizing it to redo our bathrooms next to the putt putt. Needs all new fixtures. It needs new roof and everything else. But that right there would get, you know, allocating it to Buffington instead of using like with the community building. We'd have to do with a supplemental budget at the city council level. But I wanted to get what you guys thought. I had heard at the Parks Department, if we were cool with trying to move that money over to a different line item in our budget and so utilize it this year and get, get some projects done. Since we don't, we're not technically got anything done this year in a sense for our parks. We could get that done. And then in turn, that money, we could use, slide some of that money and put it over in the, in the visitor center and get some of the upgrades done that we did there too. Like I said, we, we have a little bit of money that we can utilize that we're not utilizing this year because of the new grant that we just got.
Money given that we haven't used.
Yeah, well, it's allocated. Money was allocated. So, uh, the city council would have to do a supplemental budget pretty much to, it, it's, it's, it's not tricky, but it's, it just has to be moved to a different line item for us to utilize it the way we would like to utilize it instead of it just giving backs transferred to the general fund. When we don't utilize it this year.
I'm supportive.
Before July.
Yeah, before July. So the same thing. We just have to get three competitive bids and everything else. And, and if we can do that, believe me, I, I'll be point man for that and get, and get the, you know, the construction and everything else. Get three contractors there to figure out what would be the best. I would love to get the bathrooms. That's one of the biggest complaints with our park. That and also, um, a water fountain, water bottle filling station. That's what I'm trying to utilize all the money that we raised for the disc golf stuff. That's really what I want. I want to put a, a, a water bottle filling station in our park. We don't even have anywhere to get a drink.
I mean, to support what you're saying, I literally looked out of the school, kids in preschool, and there was a gentleman peeing in front of the discontinued bathrooms.
Exactly.
In public.
Cause our part, our, our, you know, our, our, the signs literally still say the bathroom is that way. They didn't even, so that's the other part we should probably do is a consideration is getting a new signage. Be awesome for Buffington Park because it's not correct the way it sits now. The sign that's there is very in the front, that's right, is on Arizona Street and Fourteenth, has arrows going to things that we even have anymore. So that's it. That's what I'd like to do for my consideration was try to allocate some money. We already have allocated this year, but putting it into a different line item since we're not going to utilize it.
I don't think it makes sense to replace a roof on a building. You're about to.
I would be really upset if we spent forty four thousand dollars on a roof that we.
Uh, do we need to, do we need to make a recommendation to city council as to how to reallocate those funds and say, you know?
I would just like a consensus and then I'll bring it to council when I go to the meeting this week, the August month, if that's okay.
By consensus, uh, would we like to ask city council to consider reallocating the forty six thousand dollars?
Forty four.
Forty four thousand dollars. Thank you. That are currently, uh, designated for the repair and maintenance of the community building and reapplying those funds to the visitor's center and Buffington.
Yep.
Yes?
Yeah, cool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. All right.
All right. I'll bring it up at the city council meeting, you know what I mean? So that way we can try to get a supplemental, supplemental budget. Like I said, it's not going to be that hard because it's like we're asking for more money. We're just asking to move our, you know, the line item over.
Shuffle it.
That's not going to be.
So this brings, uh, just looking at this, this brings up a question for me, Greg. It says here, if I'm looking at it right, R and M Battle Rock.
Yep.
So we have that, that fourteen thousand five.
Now, remember that also includes our janitorial services that include, so Battle Rock.
For all of Battle Rock.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, so that includes, when, when you look at, when you looked at the, the financial report itself and it says, you know, uniform services and all that. That's the other stuff that comes out of every little line item on our park has a little bit that pays for that, if that makes sense. You know what I mean? So we can't like deplete that down.
Okay, but we, it does look like we do have potentially some money in there to help with the access.
Thirteen thousand. And I think that we were supposed to be doing something again, like a roof, I think, on the visitor's center. So I don't know if that got allocated into the Battle Rock version or if that got into the visitor's center. I know we were supposed to do roofs as a city this year, but again, with, with city admin, everything else right now. I, I, I know yours, your roof is number two on top of the water. Yep, believe me, I, I, I know. So that's why, that's why I'm trying to allocate the money that we already have, just to move it around to the correct channel for this year. I'd like to get some projects started in parks. So it sounds, my major goal is to get parks, projects completed.
Yeah, sounds like a good effort. Thank you, Greg.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. Other commissioners' considerations. All right. Uh, I'm going to close section nine. Uh, we'll move on to item ten, which is the announcement of our future meeting. Our next meeting will be Thursday. This is January fourth, but it's going to be in February, I promise. So let me see. It will be Thursday, February first, twenty twenty four. Uh, in chambers at six o'clock. For the business, I will adjourn the meeting at six forty eight.
Thank you, guys.
The recordings, please. Yes, yes?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.